All right, good evening. It is Tuesday, February 4th. Welcome to the February Board of Directors Open Meeting. So we'll begin as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance led by our Director Commission.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Joe. All right, and with that, let's do a verification of quorum, please.
Director Cook?
Here.
Director Commission?
Here.
Director Doherty?
Here.
President Van Vliet?
Here.
Hearing for President Quorum Met.
And just for everyone, if everyone, anyone is wondering where Director Bill is, he is on a business trip. The poor soul is in Hawaii on a business trip. I know, but somebody's gotta go. And then, and it was Jeff's turn this time, but he will be here. He will turn later this week and be here for all the fun meetings coming up, which we'll talk about in a bit. Okay, um, let's start. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of January 7th?
So moved.
Second.
Perfect. All in favor of approving the minutes is written, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Hearing for in favor, motion carries.
Perfect. All right, let's begin with our esteemed public official comments. Darcy, you want to come on up?
Evening, President, Board, Staff, Neighbors, Friends. A couple of things. First, I want to announce that tomorrow the Mayor and I are having coffee at 7:30, and we have an esteemed guest, President Roger Schultz from Mount San Antonio College. So he's going to join us at 7:30 and give us an update about the new four-year college. And a really exciting thing about a new media market that they're spearheading, that's very exciting. And then some of the new programs they have going. So it's an hour, we'll get you in and out, I promise. But Mayor Terry and I really wanted to make it an effort to have different stakeholders and influencers from the community, the larger community, come and have an opportunity to meet with our residents, and this is our first one, so we're really excited to have Roger. And then we will have, and I'm going to have to check the date, I think it's the 20th. Senator Kelly Ciarto had his cancel last time and reschedule. He had to stay in Sacramento. I believe it's Thursday, the 20th, he'll be back, but I'll, I'll let people know. So that's what's happening. We are in the process of changing out and updating our valves in the dam. So there was a few phone calls about a film, I'll say it looked like a film, on part of the, on the water. That is a food-grade oil. Those valves were put in there, I think in the late 70s, early 80s, so it's time. That seems like yesterday to me, but anyway, it's time. So they, it's a very slow process, takes divers have to go down and do it piece by piece, so it's going to be a while. And there may be some odors as they switch out the different parts, so I ask for your patience. But it's very important, obviously, to keep the safety and the integrity of the dam in check. So one of the things we did discover is that one of the pieces was made out of stainless steel and the other was made out of, I'd say, inferior product. We're having the stainless steel one redone, so we'll have a backup. Yay, because it's not like you can go to Lowe's or Home Depot and pick one up. They're not readily available. We kicked off our budget process last month, and we'll continue starting tomorrow. We're looking at four to six-hour study sessions. It's about a billion-dollar operation, Elsinore Valley is now, and we have about a $600 million capital improvement project, projects over the next six years. So nothing's getting less expensive, although I keep hoping. So as I know more, I'll obviously let you know, we're going to have to revisit capacity fees, which are those fees that developers pay for new construction. That also means people that are building on empty lots here. They're considered new construction or new users, they have to pay those same capacity fees, which to me is a challenge. So we work very closely with our cities, the county, and obviously the developer community, try and come up with something that's a little bit more reasonable. I think the first pass was like 48% increase, which to me was not palatable. So I'm happy to say I was able to get enough support to defeat that, but we're going to have to figure out how to pay for it and figure out what we can maybe defer. I need to talk about encroachment construction. So in our settlement agreement, it very clearly says that if you want to build something on Elsinore Valley Municipal Lot of Property, which may appear to be your property, but it is not, there's a process, it's very well-defined. Go to the POA first, you pull the paperwork. If it's in our area, then you send it to us, and then it goes back, and then it goes to the city. And there's, we've just had a number of issues come up, so I just want to remind people, just because it looks like it's yours, it's not. And there's a process, there's a process the POA put in place, there's a process we put in place, there's a process the city put in place. And depending on what it is and what you put, we may ask you to remove it, no matter how expensive it was to put there. So just, if you're not sure, it's almost like dig alert. Ask first, build later. So just be aware. I've had a lot of phone calls about our fire readiness as a water system. So you may or may not know that Canyon Lake as a whole is a, I want to say a hodgepodge, but maybe a quilt of different water systems that were all kind of connected together. There's Elsinore Valley that serves most of the lake, and then eastern serves the other side of the lake. That would be more along the East Gate area, on the north side of the East Gate area. We work really closely with Canyon Lake Fire Department. Since they have taken over, it's seamless. It's a great relationship. If they need to go practice exercising hydrants, our staff makes sure that we know about it, so there's not a pressure drop, that your service is safe and connected. As well as if we know we need to exercise hydrants, we call them so that they can be part of the process, we're not wasting water. We know some of our hydrants are older. We have a plan for replacing them. So it's a master plan. It's updated regularly. And we have been working with our local, well, state revolving fund, Enwell's Congressional Representatives, like how do we fund this going forward, because it's not inexpensive. I want to be really clear, though, the type of wildfire you had in LA, there is no water system currently in place that could have dealt with it. The thing that people are not talking about, though, is when you have an electric vehicle in your garage and your house catches on fire, instead of 1,300 to 2,000 gallons to take that fire out, you're at 30,000 to 50,000 gallons to maybe put it out. And if you have multiple of those in a block, it's next to impossible. You just can't move that much water through a system that quickly to meet demand. So if this is our new reality, and I'm not talking about brush mitigation and other things that we can all do as a community to make sure that we're safe, when we look at how we build systems, we're going to have to look at it differently. I know for some of our neighbors that have maybe done a larger expansion or remodel, the fire chief has required fire sprinklers, that's part of the reason. Right? So the codes change, things change, and, and we just need to be mindful that what we built in 1964 was never intended to deal with something like that, unfortunately happened in Los Angeles. And then last but not least, on a personal note, I have been dealing with the Delta smelt fish since 2009. When I worked in Orange County, I had a big post-it on the wall, and I had people come in and put whatever Delta smelt recipes they could think of. Delta smelt animal style, Delta smelt sushi, it's kind of my way to just kind of deal with something that was very large. Never in my career of water have I had so many people now know what a Delta smelt is. So I'm very appreciative that the President brought light to a little fish that has caused havoc on our managing our water system. And as an industry, we need to do a better job of educating the President of how our water system actually works, and we're working on that. But nobody on my family on the east coast or Midwest knew what a Delta smelt was, and now they all do. And for that, I am truly, truly grateful. So happy to take any questions.
Thanks for the reminder about encroachment areas, Darcy. I know when we bought our house eight years ago, we wanted to do an improvement, and I went down to the POA initially, and then the city, and found out that everything that I thought was cemented down to the water line was ours, and found out it wasn't. And, and I've heard many homeowners have had that same experience. So yes, it's always best to check if you're, if you're buying a new house on the waterfront. When you go into your escrow, find out, figure out where the property lines are and so forth. It's just good to be aware so that in that case, asking for forgiveness can be expensive.
Sometimes there is no forgiveness.
Right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, let's, Community Patrol update, come on up.
Good evening. My name is Captain Davis. I'm going to be filling in for Chief Wells tonight. We're going to be going over the Community Patrol report for the month of December. The violations issued, speeding, we had one call for service, a total of 57 citations issued for speeding inside of the community. Parking-related violations, we had 24 calls for service total with 44 citations issued. Unauthorized entry, we had 43 total calls for service with six total citations issued. E-bike violations, we had 12 calls for service with six total violations issued. Noise complaints, we responded to 11 calls for oh, I'm sorry about that. We had for noise complaints, 11 total calls for service with two citations issued. As far as total calls for service in the month of December, we received 187 calls total. Calls unable to locate were 17. Guest citations issued over the month were 72 total. Service provider citations includes contractors, vendors, and things of that nature, it's going to be zero. Member citations issued was 101. Total warning violations were 48. Zero speed trailer, sorry, zero speed trailer citations went out for the month of December. We issued three, sorry, responded to three vandalism issues within the community over the course of the month. Property damage reports that were filed totaled 16. Miscellaneous violations totaled 22. Zero school bus enforcement violations. Forty-three violations for failure to stop at a stop sign. And two violations for illegal riding and towing typically relating to people riding in a boat while they're being towed down the street. As far as gate entry statistics, we had 285 confiscated guest passes with seven cases of misuse of access identification. Two-lane protocol during the month of December was pretty busy with 324 total minutes, 154 at the main gate, and 170 at the East Gate.
Very good. So you had 57 speeding citations, but only, but none from the speed trailer, so that's impressive. Was that all done with patrol car?
That's correct.
Wow. That's a big increase, so.
Yeah.
We were in a hurry over Christmas time, I guess.
Yeah. Yeah, we've been, we've been working with our road patrol officers. We've definitely been, you know, pushing the traffic-related safety violations and been much more active on that front than trying to take advantage of the speed trailers that we currently have.
Good work. Okay. Any comments from the board? So, good work on that. We've received maybe a couple of comments or 200 from, on e-bikes in the last couple of months. What's happening on the e-bike front, Ken?
Well, Bill, I'm glad you asked because we're excited that we've added three bikes to the fleet for the Community Patrol to use to enforce the e-bike issues, as well as patrol other areas normally not available to a patrol car. I will say that these bikes did not cost us a dime. The vendors provided those, and we're glad to have them, and we're thankful for that. We are in the process of training officers to use them more often. We did a soft open on Friday, we worked the East Gate. Some of you may have noticed a few posts on social media about that. We did get the attention of some riders who would ride up to the gate, see us up there, turn around, and go somewhere else. So some people ran from us, et cetera. It's just one more thing in the step to create that safe environment, support the kids that want to have fun and do it right, and hold the people accountable to the rules.
Great, thanks. And so, yeah, just to emphasize that point, because it was made in social media that there was a concern that this was going to be another expense that the POA went to, but those, the e-bike patrol cost us no additional money, right?
That's correct.
Great. And how many e-bikes are registered now?
We have, in the community, 798 e-bikes. And we also know that there's a lot that are not registered yet, and we're looking for those. So you can guess, there's probably about 1,000 in the neighborhood.
Okay, great work, guys. Thanks so much. All right, it is my honor tonight to recognize our February member of the month, Rhonda McCord. Rhonda moved to Canyon Lake in December of 2020. If you, many of those of you remember, that was the beginning of the heyday of COVID. I know my wife and I were flat on our back in December 2020. It was not necessarily a great time to move, but it, but she came here from Anaheim Hills. She, she has four children, 10 grandchildren overall. Rhonda is a member of four quilting clubs, The Mermaids, and a book club. She also teaches paper, paper crafting. So Rhonda got involved with the sewing group at the senior center, and she met Kathy Barbey, and she's, she's now the leader of our Canyon Lake Patriotic Quilters Club. And this is a group of 15, or 14, 15 ladies who meet on the fourth Wednesday of every month. And they work on patriotic quilts that they donate to veterans in Canyon Lake, who live in Canyon Lake. These works are a labor of love, and they're works of art. In fact, I have some show and tell to, as an example of that. Let me just show you that for a second. Beautiful workmanship, great job. They hand those out again, for, they create these, they donate them to the veterans, and it's, it's just such a terrific, terrific thing that they do for our community. Rhonda's been leading the group for the last five years, and she started, and they started off, this group has, their group has been doing it for 15 years. They started off doing one or two a year. They are now up to one a month that they donate. And so if anyone knows of any veterans in the community that would, would like to receive one, they are, they're always open for nominations. It's a wonderful thing to do, and our pleasure to, Rhonda, come on up and let us welcome you or recognize you. You know, this is just one of the many things that make our community such a great place. And so again, to the quilters, to Rhonda, thank you so much for, for all you guys do out of the generosity and love your hearts. So we have some announcements. As many of you may recall, last month we passed the new measure to do electronic voting. And today, our elections are, will be in May. And today we have our Inspector of Elections here to answer any questions that anyone may have associated with this. And it's Jeff Price. Welcome, Jeff. Thank you for coming, coming here. And maybe Jeff, you can just refresh everyone's memory on what, what we're doing and how that works with this inspector of election, or with this election.
So hopefully you all got a letter recently that showed you how you're currently set up to vote. For the folks that have an email with the association, we were provided that email, and that letter that you received said, "If you do nothing else, you're going to get the electronic ballot sent to that email address." So if you do nothing, that's what you're going to get. If you didn't have an email address, what it said was, "You're going to get a paper ballot mailed to you." And then it showed you the steps that you would need to follow if you wanted to switch that. So for example, if you're set up to get paper and you wanted to get electronic, you fill out that information. If you're set up to get an electronic and you wanted to opt out of that, you would have circled the little bubble that says, "I want to buy paper," and that's how you'll get it. If you want to make any changes, you still have until February 14th to make that change, so there's still time for anybody that wants to do that. But as of the end of February 14th, we will move forward with however you left things off with us. And right now, it's probably around 80% or 75% are going to get it electronically this year. That's going to look, if anybody has publicly traded stock, you know, you'll get an email that says, "Here's your Board of Directors," fill out, it's going to kind of look like that. But if you, you know, you'll get a candidate statement as an example that might be different. The email will give you confirmation once you've done it, so you know, you know, if it, if it worked on your side, it'll say, you know, success. And the meeting itself is probably going to be a lot shorter this year. So for the folks that have been here the last few years, you know, there's three or four of us in the middle here opening up a couple thousand ballots. I suspect it will be a couple hundred this year, so we'll be able to give you an answer much quicker.
And any questions from the board or from the audience? Anyone have any questions or doubts or anything you want to ask? This is kind of the time to, to bring it forward.
Jeff, do you know, you guys, your company does more than our HOA. There's a lot, and this is a very, very new process. Are a lot of HOAs jumping on the chance to do this?
No, I think a lot of people are waiting to get feedback from the early adopters like yourselves. The, the, you know, it's never as easy as you think, right? There's always additional steps the legislature does, like this, this notice that went out to everybody. And so for like this community, I think we got 200 emails so far with people saying, either I want to change, or sort of just confirming what they were already set up for, and we got maybe 60 or 70 letters back saying, you know, make a change. So any times there's a change, you know, people get a little concerned. Some people are a little leery of, you know, doing this electronically, like, you know, if you vote for your president or your senator, you know, that stuff's still by paper. And you're not just managing, you know, just electronic or just paper. When you utilize electronic voting, you're getting both. Because if one person in the community doesn't have an email address, they're getting paper. So as an inspector, we're just have to set up for both systems if you utilize electronic. And, you know, just a level of complication for people in addition to something being new. So, you know, to answer your question, not a lot yet. I know a lot of folks that are like, "We want to see how it's going to work this year, and we're gonna do it in 2026." But you're not the only ones.
Jeff, sometimes people procrastinate and kind of wait till the last minute to come in, and they'll run in here with the ballot the day of the, of the election and so forth. How do you handle that for, for people who choose to do it electronically?
So if they, they walk up to us, we'll send them another email, even though they're standing next to us, we'll, you know, hopefully they have their phone or some sort of device. Yeah, we're kind of curious to see what the, the legal teams of different associations say. If they're like, "Well, they don't have their phone, you should give them paper." The legal counsel we have said, "Whatever they are with on that deadline, you should go with," you know. So if they're standing there and they're set up for paper, we're going to hand them a paper ballot like we've done in the past. If they come up to us and they are set up to get electronic, we're going to try to encourage them to, "Do you have a phone? Do you have a device? Can you run home and do it?" Just so we don't run any issues. I don't, I don't know. Do you have a thought on that?
Yeah, I think that's a safe call.
So that, that's kind of what we're hearing.
So they can continue to vote up to the day of the election?
Correct, yeah. And I don't, I'm pretty sure you guys have the ballot box. Again, I got to check that, but you know, for folks that can't make the meeting and have paper, there'll be the ballot box by the security shack. For the folks that want to run in here, we'll be here to either hand them a ballot or email them another link to the ballot if they're here. So that polls open period will be the same as all the previous years we've done. Eight to nine, eight to nine AM.
Jeff, have you had any feedback on if this will improve or change the ability to achieve quorum?
So we've done electronic-only votes in other states for some clients, and they definitely get more voters. So for an association like you guys that tends to be pretty close to quorum at that original meeting, and I don't know, half or two-thirds of the time, we need that, those extra two days to get to the adjourned quorum. My, my guess is, if I'm, you know, betting in Vegas, you guys will probably achieve it at that first meeting, would be my guess.
We look forward to that. That would be good. Any other, any other questions? From the, from anyone, audience? Come on up.
Hello, Bill Medvid, 3868229. Is it appropriate to share how many responses you've gotten already?
For the?
People that have opted in?
So the, so if anybody, probably Andrew here, wants to correct me, let me know. The folks had an email, I think, what, an email address, I think was around 4,200 of the 4,800, give or take a little bit. So you're going to have 600 or 700 people that are paper unless they reach out to us and say, "We want to change." After that initial communication went out with the 600 or 700 paper, 4,200 electronic, I think we've heard from around 250 folks. But that's not all folks that are changing. Some people just, you know, didn't read what it said, where it said, "If you don't want any changes, don't do anything." Some of those folks still sent us an email, and we had to check and see, okay, how were they set up? Is it right? But I think the folks that sent an actual letter back to us, almost all of them went from electronic to paper, and I think that's around 80 as of today.
Anyone else? Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it. Again, thanks for coming down and providing additional clarity for us. It's a big step for us. We have, we have high hopes and looking forward to this, being the early adopter. I'll, I have two other announcements, since we're in the announcement period. One is, we have a meeting, probably the most important meeting of the year is next, is in two weeks, February 18th. Same place at the Lodge at 6:00 PM is our budget workshop. And so if anyone has any questions or any interest in, in the budget process, how it's built, what are the drivers, how much my due is going to be, that's the meeting to come, because it is, it is a forum to ask questions and have it, have a dialogue with us before we actually make the final decision on the budgets. And I'll tell you, there have been some significant headwinds that we've, we have faced this year. It's been a very serious subject for us. This current year, we were hit with a 40% increase in insurance. That was a surprise impact as a result of, of changing vendors on that. I saw on the news today that as a result of the California fires in Los Angeles, State Farm has required, has requested another 22% increase. And all of these affect the cost of operating. So these are the headwinds that we're dealing into, as well as inflation and the price of gas and the price of eggs and other things that we deal with. And so there's a lot of challenges. And so there's a lot of challenges. Um, our, our staff has worked very hard to, uh, to address the costs, come up with cost savings ideas. And they'd be happy to, they will be discussing that and making, uh, making their recommendations Tuesday, February 18th in two weeks. So encourage everyone to come out for that. The other thing is in addition to receiving your electronic notice on the, uh, electronic voting, everyone has probably received their survey. How many people have filled out their surveys yet? Okay. Good. A little over half. Um, that's good. This is your opportunity to provide your feedback to, to, to the POA and the board as to what, um, what your experience has been here. What's going well? What are areas that you'd like to see improved? And, and help us set the direction in future for where you'd like to see, can you like be in the future? This is your opportunity to speak up. Um, we do ask for your name initially to verify that you are a resident, not a resident, but a member of record. Other than that, we, we collect all the information. It's all compiled and, and we will share that with you probably in April, uh, board meeting, be my guess. So if you haven't had a chance, we have received about five percent of the population has come back, which is good for the first couple of weeks, but that means 95% have yet to come in. So, uh, if you haven't heard yet, please encourage your friends, your neighbors, uh, any other members, any club members. Please give us your feedback. Uh, we, we really want to get, I hear it.
Mr. President, um, I just wanted to mention, we do have drop boxes at the member services at the country club, the lodge and senior center. So if anyone wants to just drop off their survey there and we're picking them up periodically, that's easier for them to do.
Great. Yeah. Thanks, Andrea. Perfect. Yep. With that, any member comments we've received?
We do not have any tonight.
All right. Okay. Well, forward to our agenda then, um, beginning with the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A and B?
So moved. Second.
All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed?
Hearing for in favor, motion carries.
Great. All right. Let's start with our first measure, 8.1, the 28 day reading, uh, for rule revision on the voter card. So Mary, can you come on up and tell us about that, please?
Good evening. Um, so affected January 1st, 2025, California state law mandated that all, that all boaters, regardless of age, must possess a California voter card while operating on state waterways. Our existing rule, Lake and Marina 6.9, age and voter card requirements for boat operation. Previously detailed a phase schedule based on age groups leading up to this date. The final phase specifies that as of January 1st, 2025, the requirement extends to all boaters being operated. Essentially, all we're doing is removing all of the dates out of the rule.
Thank you, Mary. Is there a motion to, to approve the 28 day reading?
So moved. Second.
All right. Any member comments from the floor? Come on up.
Hi, everybody. Paul Hawker, 3804052. Just a couple of things. Uh, I did see the survey boxes around the community to drop off them. Maybe if you had a survey card available for them so people could pick them up. Cause a lot of people I've talked to just go, well, I'm not sure I've kept it after I got it in the mail. So just, you know, a stack there if, if it can do that. Uh, number two is I wanted to, uh, make a comment on the, uh, the e-bikes that have been obtained by the, uh, our crack patrol agents over here. Uh, I've seen three instances over the last week. One is a large group of marauding e-bikers were broken up by a gentleman, the best in an e-bike. And they all scattered like the wind, but he got three of them and they had a good talking to. That was good. So I'm sure that they had a conversation at their undisclosed meeting location. Uh, number two is, um, I, I saw, um, two kids were talked to by the, uh, the, uh, patrol on an e-bike. And it seemed like they're having a good conversation. The rules, regulations were being explained to them, very professional. Everybody was happy, having a good time. It seemed very respectful. And so that was good also. And number three is all, uh, down by East Gate, I saw two out and out gas powered motocross bikes. That had been again talked to by an e-bike patrol. And they were doing the walk of shame, pushing their bikes out onto, uh, to Getz Road. Where they then would have to explain to their parents and their buddies how they got busted by a, uh, a, a patrol on an e-bike. So good job, guys. Uh, we've got a lot of support from the community. And also as far as the safe voter court card, I'm getting a lot of, uh, feedback from people that want to apply for this, especially seniors now that, uh, everybody has to have it. And if there's some kind of handy hints or guidelines that could be, uh, sent out. Cause people don't know where to go. What's, you know, you have to go to the state of California. The state of California gives you a list of 20 people to choose from. You don't know which one to choose from to take a course. You take the course, uh, that takes about four hours, five hours. And then you get a note that you're not done yet. You have to go back to the state of California and take their tests that takes another hour. And, uh, they're, you know, they're, they're not making it all the way through the process without a lot of frustration. So if there's any kind of guidelines that somebody could coalesce and print out and say, first do this, then do this, and then do this. It, it would be very comforting for people that don't know what they're getting into because it ends up being kind of a big deal. And other than that, the community seems to be just clicking along fine. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks for the feedback, Paul. Appreciate that input. Any board comments? I'll have one, uh, and that is that, uh, I guess the message from this Mary is that, um, you've had seven years notice. It's time's up. So even for us, so, so for those who may be procrastinators, it's time to, time to get the job done. So all in favor of approving the 28 day reading, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Hearing for in favor, motion carries.
All right. Thank you, Mary. Ken?
Last month, the board approved a 28D read for the rule revision, GR 5.1 and 5.1A, which are general information about how we follow the rules of the road in a community. It is recommended that the board of directors approve to revise the rule associated with GR point 5.1 and GR point 5.1A as attached.
Is there a motion to approve the rule on violations, uh, non-specified violations to community? Is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
All right. Any member comments on that or with the first and the second? No member comments? Great. Okay. Board comments or discussion?
I have a couple of comments about this rule. It seems a little, um, it needs a little more detail to me because at this point you could be just sitting in your golf cart at the golf course and get a ticket if you have open container. It doesn't even say moving vehicle. It just says vehicle. Also, we know all golfers, when they're on the golf course, probably have a little cold ice beverage, um, in their golf cart. And this right here would make that against our rules. So I, I would like, I would like to either amend this or table it and send it back to the rules committee for a little more guidance on this.
When we get to that one, we certainly will. We're still on the one right above it, sir.
I'm the open container one, are we not? Oh, sorry. Sorry.
That was a preview of things to come.
My bad.
So, um, are we going to vote on 8.2?
Thinking on 5.1 and 5.1A, that's where we are. See if there's any board discussion before we vote. Any other questions about this? As I see it, this is just, it's just as any, uh, it applies the rules to all, all vehicles. And it took out some of the language that was specifically referred to the, the vehicle code because we don't use the vehicle code in the community. I think it's a reason for that being removed. So is that a correct interpretation?
Correct. It was just to pull out the state of California law piece and the rules of the road as stated in DMV paperwork.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Good. Any others? All right. Let's vote, uh, on this, uh, all in favor of approving, uh, GR 5.5.1 and GR point 5.1A. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I didn't vote. Aye.
Hearing for in favor, motion carries.
Okay. All right.
So last month, uh, there was a 28 day read for 5.1F restriction on alcoholic beverages for no open containers. It is recommended that the board of directors approve to revise the rules, the fine associated with GR point 5.1F as attached.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve this measure on open containers? I will make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Member comments or questions? No member comments. Board member comments or discussion?
Can I go now? I mean, we've had this rule in place for a long time. It's kind of rewriting the rule, but, um, I think it can have a little more detail to it before we vote on it. One of the things is obviously everybody that's golfing, not everybody, but a lot of people have a nice cold beverage when they're golfing. And this right here would make that against the rules to do that as well. If you were just sitting in your golf cart, um, I don't know, having a beer, watching the fireworks, that would be against our rules too. So I think it should be moving vehicle. I think it needs to have a little more detail to the rule itself. And so, um, either we need to table it or, and send it back to rules committee or, uh, your guidance, Mr. President.
Would you like to amend it, make an amended subsidiary motion to, to, um, to say no, no open containers of alcohol in a moving vehicle? Would that scratch the itch?
That would scratch one of the edges. I mean, and then I think the golf course needs to be addressed in a somewhere form.
You could also make it stipulate that it would be on our roads versus the golf cart. The golf carts don't travel on the roads in a golf course because it's the path. So I think by definition, if you just said moving vehicles on our roads, that would maybe steam off some of that for you.
So I'm, what I'm hearing is you'd like to make a subsidiary motion to amend this to say no open containers of alcohol in a moving vehicle on our community roads.
I feel like you're making me say that word subsidiary, you know, I can't say. Yes, yes, I, that's, Mr. President, yes.
So we have a subsidiary motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any member comments on this subsidiary motion? No. Any other further discussion? All in favor of the amended subsidiary motion, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Hearing for in favor, subsidiary motion carried.
Yeah, I know. Look at the fun we get to have up here. Okay. Very good. Good. All right, Ken, keep, keep it rolling.
Okay, we have a request for proposed resolution to be voted upon for approval. It involves our speed trailers. Back in 2017, the board of directors approved a purchase of speed trailers. I'm sorry.
Yeah. You got the GR?
It's his fault, sir.
2.2. 2.2.2.
Okay. Last month, there was a 28 day read for a rule and fine revision for GR 2.20, which speaks to the use of, or operating a vehicle while under the influence of alcohol. It is recommended that the board of directors approve to revise the rule and fine associated with GR point 2.20 as attached.
Is there a motion to approve this rule?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Member comments or questions? Board member comments, questions?
Year ago. Um, I don't know why this bothers me, but it does, that we're going to use law enforcement to determine whether we're going to find somebody. I just feel like our fines are here for compliance, not for punishment. And they would already have gotten arrested and dealing and already, and getting punished. And the other reason is we're going to write them a fine right away when we see them get arrested. And that doesn't mean that you were guilty before innocent. You're innocent before guilty. And one of the things that bothers me about that is they're going to come to appeals committee before they ever go to court. And they're going to want to appeal their fine. And I, I just think it's just struggling with law enforcement's determining who we're giving fines to.
I think that's a fair comment. As I recall, when this first ruling was put forward, um, it actually did not have law enforcement. We added it in the 28 day reading.
Yes, sir. This rule has gone through many revisions with lots of conversation because it is an exciting topic for the community and I appreciate that. I would like to point out that previously this rule has existed for years, but there was no fine attached to it at all. This started out with, hey, let's just put a fine to this to hopefully dissuade people from that behavior. And then with the input from many people, all well intentioned, uh, we got to this point.
As I recall, the, the discussion we had last month when we put forward the 28 day reading, we, that was added for the following reason. There was some concern about who is going to determine if you are intoxicated or not. Is, is community patrol going to be there, going to do DUI checks? And that, and that's how I think this got inserted was no, if, if law enforcement is there and they, and they issue a citation for it, then we have the right to be able to apply our fines. And I think that's how that came about. So.
Correct.
Yeah, clarity. So we're kind of in bath with places.
Alex, I, I agree with you and your concern. And I would hope that this fine would never have to be imposed. But, uh, we've had a number of serious accidents alcohol related. We've had some deaths in the community alcohol related. And I think if nothing else, uh, this rule, I support this rule as a deterrent in hopes that we never have to use it and impose it.
All right, let's vote. All in favor of approving this rule, uh, on, uh, operation of a vehicle while under the influence of alcohol, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Hearing three in favor, one opposed. Motion carries.
All right. Ken, speed trailers.
All right. So back in 2017, the board approved to purchase speed trailers to help with speed control in the community. Recently, it was discovered that the speed trailers we're using have older technology, was no longer able, able to be upgraded. And the manufacturer no longer supports upgrading of the equipment and the software. The new speed trailers available today have updated components, cameras, battery life, allowing for better and more streamlined product as well as cloud storage and less labor intensive interaction to do the citations. The fiscal impact of this purchase will be $36,762.57. It is recommended that the board of directors approve the purchase of two speed trailers in the amount of $36,762.57 with a 5% contingency. Based on when I got the quote in the 30 days.
Thank you, Ken. Is there a motion to approve this purchase?
So moved.
Second.
Right. Any member comments? Board comments?
So Ken, as I understand this, this is essentially a giant upgrade in technology. I mean, these speed trailers are nothing but, you know, technical, technological gadgets with wheels. Uh, ours are seven years old. It's like, that's like ancient history in the tech world.
It is. It's like going from analog to digital. I mean, uh, how many of the cell phones in the community are more than seven years old? I mean, how many of the cell phones in the community are more than seven years old?
Yeah.
So I would go with definitely. And it sounds like these are going to be able to catch up with technology as it grows much better than our previous.
And also, just so everyone knows, we're having difficulties with our current provider, the folks that sold us the ones we are now using. And this is a new provider with new technology. Obviously, we just discussed that. So this should be a terrific, a terrific upgrade to our community patrol activities.
I'm in favor of this as well. And for another reason, that is while we're expending money, this is coming out of the CIP funds because we're adding capability to our complement of old technology. But more importantly, it generates revenue. And so they will pay for themselves in about a year, a year and a half's timeframe. So while it is an expense, it has a pretty quick payback. So. Any other comments? All in favor of approving this purchase that we have to do a roll call since this is a purchase?
Director Cook?
Yay.
Director Commission?
Yes.
Director Doherty?
Yes.
President Van Bly?
Yes.
Hearing for in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. All right. At that, we're up to board liaison committee reports. Joe, why don't you lead us off?
Well, my committee reports for the TWG. I wasn't able to make their meeting in January, but they did have a, on maintenance day, January 13th, they had a divot party and they filled. They filled, oh, it is a party because they serve coffee and donuts. And they certainly, they filled divots on the entire golf course in about two, two and a half hours. So they had 40 volunteers show up and it was a great accomplishment. And it's just a small project on what they do overall in the community and on the golf course. They're a great group and they're always looking for new members. If anybody's interested, any Tuesday morning, show up down at the maintenance yard at 7:30 in the morning. Green committee was also dark, so I have no report on the green committee other than their meeting. Not this week, but the following week on Thursday, 1 o'clock in the Magnolia room. If you have any interest in the golf course, maintenance or care, please come on down and share your thoughts. Thank you.
Okay, recreation committee. I also was not able to make the December meeting, but some interesting things happened there. The committee voted down a cornhole proposal at Sunset Beach. It was interesting. They just decided there wasn't enough room there to put a cornhole facility and make it, make it work. They also positioned some people, some of the committee members to do field trips to our various parks, do a walk around and try and determine what, if anything, was needed at the individual parks and bring that back to the committee, which meets again next Tuesday afternoon. They also are assisting the Little League in some of their endeavors, one of which was, is a score sign, scorekeeping sign. And some Steve apparently presented some samples of some designs of some scoreboards. There's a word I was looking for. And the committee selected one and Steve's going to get some bids on those. So once again, the committee meets this coming Tuesday and I will be there. And we'll see what else the rec committee comes up with for the community. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. I'm liaison to the security advisory committee. They, they're working with community patrol, also with, they'll be having a meeting with the city on a joint city POA group or on neighborhood watch. And so that's coming up at their next meeting, which I believe is next week. Also on the senior work group, senior work group had a successful New Year's Eve party that went very well. They're also, once a quarter, they're doing free lunches for seniors in the community. That's catered, catered lunch. The next one will be a Mexican buffet that will be catered by Peppies at the end of March. And so if anyone is interested, you can go sign up and enjoy a free dinner. They'll be doing one in June and then I think quarterly after that. I also had the opportunity to sit in with the finance committee. Jeff Bill's the liaison, he's not here today, but I sat in that. And they, they spent a large part of January doing their budget workshop where they, they, they got with the various managers. They, they went through the budgets and a lot of good work has been done on the committee to bring some, to kind of update some of the processes there and, and help the POA in, in, in arriving at a budget, given all the budget headwinds. So I want to commend that group in particular for, for their hard work. Alex?
So last month, I said on the rules committee, the two things we're working on, the rules committee is reviewing the quagmire rule. It hasn't been looked at in probably 10 years or more. So there's a lot of inconsistencies and stuff are going through that. So that's being touched and so forth. That was their homework assignment for next week. We'll be going over that. And as well, there's new e-bike rules in the state of California. So they're reviewing those and they're going to bring those back to the committee next week to see where we need to change our rules for the POA to match what the state is. So we're all inconsistent and so forth. Also sat in appeals committee. Always a fun time, but it's a, it's a great committee, great volunteers. And then the committee that we never talk about, we all sit on this committee, we rotate is ACC. So all five of us take turns sitting on it because it's a, it, there's, I think that committee works harder than I do with my job. I'm going to be honest with you. They have two full days of sitting in the POA offices, going over ACC stuff, along with going on tours, look at different properties and so forth. It's, it is a tough, tough committee. They don't make any friends. So, but we appreciate them and it's really eye opening for myself and all the board members to sit in there and see what they grapple with and what they have to get through and so forth. But big props to ACC. We always kind of skip them up here when we do our committee responsibilities because none of it, we rotate through. But they are, they are a huge asset to us. So thank you.
All right, Eric, you want to give us the general manager's report?
Yes, sir. Thank you all for coming and those of you that are still here for staying. We talked a little bit about the community survey. I want to point out that so far we've received just under 5% of the responses. We hear a lot of people say, I don't remember voting on that. Nobody asked me. Well, this is us asking you for your input. So we'd really love to see more than 5% of the community participate. Write this down. The, you can also take the survey online. Since we were sitting here at 6:33 PM, I got an email in my inbox and most of you listening or watching probably also did. We're bribing you now. If you take, you can take the survey online and if you participate, I think it's a weekly survey to win a $50 gift card, something like that. So we really do want people to participate. The web address to take it electronically is www.clpoa.com/survey. Also check your email inbox for email from us today. If you subscribe to the newsletter, I'm sure there'll be a link on Thursday night. Plenty of opportunities. It should have also come to you in the mail. So the drop boxes we mentioned, those are for the mailed hard copies, but you can also very simply just take it online. So I hope next time we talk about this, we can say 10 or 15 or 20% of the community participated, not 5%. So let's see.
So Eric, can I do mine over again?
What's that?
Can I do mine over and get in the $50 gift certificate?
No. No. Those of us who waited, like myself, will be entered into the drawing for the $50 gift certificate. So procrastination pays, just want to say. There is no payoff for procrastinating on the boater safety test, though, unfortunately. I might know someone who also procrastinated on that. Let's see. So a little update on Go Access conversion, our gate access software. Our conversion rate right now, as of yesterday, 53% of our 4,800 members or 2,866 households had converted to Go Access away from Dwelling Live. The reception has been great. Everyone seems to love the app. A couple of very minor glitches in the beginning that were fixed within an hour or two. But so far it's been a pretty seamless transition. We are having problems, hardware problems with RFID readers at the gates today unrelated. And operations is aware of that. And as I came into the meeting tonight, the gate staff was waving people into the community because of some issue with the RFID readers. We're aware and we're taking care of that. But if you have not converted to Go Access or downloaded the app, watch for an email. In our email newsletter, there were instructions on our social media, there were instructions. It's Go Access is the app and it's a very simple app for guest access. And we're going to give the community another two weeks to convert. And then by the end of this month, we'll be turning Dwelling Live off. So if you haven't converted, please do so. Let's see. We're running Valentine's Day specials at both restaurants. So if you're looking for something to do on the 14th, Country Club and the Lodge, I think probably still have some reservations. We have an Oingo Boingo concert here on February 15th. I think we still have some tickets left for that. Our recreation staff is busy planning Fiesta Day. And during COVID, we, we kind of pivoted and tried to spread Fiesta Day, which was a one day event here at the lodge. And we spread it out over five different locations and renamed it Fiesta Hopper. And that's always kind of received mixed reviews. Well, this year we're going back to a one day event called Fiesta Day. The lodge property really is too small to host everybody in one location, but we are downsizing from five locations to three. So it will be a one day Fiesta Day parade and event again at the lodge, Holiday Harbor and Sierra Park. On the following day, Sunday, May 25th, we will be having Country Fest. So we really are doing a weekend worth of events again. But Fiesta Day will be on Saturday and on Sunday, we will be hosting a free country music festival. You'll start to see us advertising this. We're going to have four national country artists at the amphitheater. It'll also be a boat in concert. So I expect we'll see a lot of people out on the lake in their boats listening. This event will start at 4 o'clock and go till 9 PM. Excuse me. Let's see. We're looking for corporate or company sponsors for this event. So if any companies, realtors, service companies are interested in sponsoring this Country Fest, Country Music Day on Sunday, May 25th, please reach out to our recreation staff. Again, that event is going to be from 4 to 9 PM the day after Fiesta Day on Sunday. The artists that we have already signed are Ty Herndon, Cody West, Canaan Smith and 1,000 Horses. So this will be the biggest music event that has ever happened in Canyon Lake. And we're pretty excited to bring it to the amphitheater this year. Recreation staff is also looking to hire a pool supervisor and the pool opens in mid-March. They wanted me to mention this tonight. So if anyone knows, if somebody might be interested in a pretty cool job for the summer, reach out to our recreation staff. And lastly, I'm proud to say that we have received, the Canyon Lake POA has received a top workplaces award for 2024 as awarded by the inland news group, which is Press Enterprise and several other newspapers. And that was based on a confidential survey of our employees. And the results that came back, I think 78 or 80% of our employees spoke highly of us as a place to work. And we're proud to say we're, we're named a top workplace in the inland empire for 2024. That's all I have, sir. Thank you. Happy to have a job.
Thanks, Eric. All right, Alex, why don't you look back the other way? If you want to have your parting comments.
I think that's the longest Eric has talked at a board meeting in three years I've been here. So good job. And his throat, nose is all messed up. So I know it's all good. Couple of things, Little League. If you guys are over at golf field, you're going to start noticing at night, they're practicing, people are crossing the street there. Slow down, stop at the stop sign. Be aware, there's a lot of little, little kids running around over there now. So, and then I want to give a little props to them. They got 25 teams for spring 25, 25 teams. It's nearly 300 players all from this community. So it is definitely one of the largest kid event that lasts four, three, four months long. Lot of volunteers that make that run. So if you are involved, if you have a kid or even if you don't and you want to volunteer for a board position over there, they'll take you. Opening day is March 8th. They do a pancake breakfast in the morning. It's open to everybody, the whole day is they have, you know, a bunch of events, a whole thing. I believe it starts at 10 AM. If you have never been to one, it's fun. I mean, it's baseball, opening day, patriotic. It's a good morning to always do that. And they're always looking for sponsors as well. The last thing I want to say, if you guys haven't noticed, if you haven't been to the lodge or the country club recently, there's new menu items. Try them out. I ate here Saturday and ate at the country club on Sunday and had two great meals. Here was lamb chops. If you guys like lamb chops, I've been begging for this to be on the menu. It's really, really good. So look at the new menu items. There's a bunch of new ones and there's still the old, all the old time favorites. So and if you see something that's not there that was there in the past, just ask. I think that most of them, they can still make it and so forth. So kind of the hidden menu like in and out. So, but definitely frequent it. It's good times. Thank you, guys.
Alex, Greg?
Yeah, just to piggyback on what Eric said, I transitioned to Go Access, the gate, new, our new gate access software. It was very easy. The, it's more user friendly, in my opinion, than Dwelling Live was. So I'd encourage everybody to jump on that bandwagon and take advantage of that. I would also like to piggyback on what Bill said earlier about the budget workshop in a couple of weeks. You know, this, this place that we live in is very complicated. We have some amenities that have employees, we have some that don't. We have some amenities that require a lot of maintenance, which costs money. And some amenities that don't require so much. We have two facilities that serve food and beverage. It's very complicated, but it all comes back to crafting a budget that meets all of those needs. You know, we don't try to make money and we try to lose as little money as possible, but that's where the dues come in. And that's what the, the main subject of that workshop is going to be. So if you have any questions about how we operate, how we come up with the budget, how finance works and comes up with their numbers and all the hundreds of hours they put in the past few months, coming up with these, coming, coming up with this budget, please come and ask questions that night. That's your chance to do that. And it's important to understand how this place operates. Because like I said, it's complicated, but we, we make it work so far. Thank you.
Okay. I definitely, I know it's a little early to tell, talk about it, but I want to just put the word out that April 26th is the collapse beautification golf tournament. It's a fundraiser that they, only fundraiser that is done on the golf course to raise funds for the golf course improvements. And the collapse have been doing this for many, many years. And over the last 15 or 20 years, they've raised over $100,000. Excuse me. This year, the Tuesday work group and the collapse worked together to refurbish the old plaques because new plaques were put in place because of the configuration of the golf course. The old plaques are going to be available for silent auction at this event. If you're interested in having a piece of Canyon Lake history, you can come down and sign up on the silent auction sheets. You don't have to participate in the tournament and you don't even have to be there to win. You just have to have the highest bid. So we, we hope to have a really good turnout and look forward to that event. The one thing that I didn't hear mentioned tonight was that the invitations for intent to run for the POA board is open. So anybody that is interested in serving on the POA board, I can tell you firsthand and personally that it is a really rewarding experience. Is it easy? No, but. No, but it's rewarding and you work with some great guys and great management team. And you actually see progress in the community. And that is where I get my pleasure and my reward. So I encourage anybody that's interested in that to come down to the corporate office and get a packet to fill out. Other than that, I'll just remind everybody about the survey. It is important for the community to hear from you about what you'd like to see this, what direction you'd like to see this community go. And we can't do that unless you tell us what you think. So take the time to fill out the, the survey and send it in. And I'll cut it off there. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Joe. I'll just have one more thing that hasn't been said, and that is I want to address the, on the best workplaces to work. That's, that's a real testament. You know, in the three years that I've been on the board, I've gotten to know the staff that we have here. And we have a tremendous staff and we have a tremendous leadership team. And, and so I think that award is recognized by the employees, really a testament to the great, the great management that we have here. They really do a good job, not only running this place and having all the great things that you heard about, but keeping a very motivated workforce. And so congratulations, guys, Eric and your team. That's everyone, top to bottom, has been frustrated. So thank you for that and congratulations. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing for in favor, meeting adjourned at 7/11.
All right, 7/11. That's a lucky number. Good night, everybody.